So Jake, can you hear us in the board chambers?
Yes.
Okay. I take that's a yes.
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, great, terrific, thank you.
No, Eagle is mute.
Ready to start?
Yes, we're good to go in chambers.
Morning, everyone. So we're going to call the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting to order, but we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
So we have the consideration of approval minutes from the August 26, 2021 Planning Commission meeting?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I will move the approval of the minutes from the August 26, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Yeah.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Motion still carried.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Haas?
It appears there's a Commissioner from Humboldt County that's in the chat room that wanted to speak on a non-agenda item.
We'll let them in at the 9:05.
Sure.
Okay, we're at the 9:05 mark, we're going to take any citizens' input.
I have a hand raised in the Zoom room?
Okay, thank you Jake, we'll start there.
All right, so I have a hand raised by Melanie McCamber. I have given you permission to speak, you should be able to unmute there.
Yes, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Melanie McCamber, and I'm a Humboldt County Planning Commissioner. And what I'd like to speak about is the upcoming statewide California County Planning Commissioners Association Conference, so I am your Northern representative, and we are hosting the conference here up in Humboldt County this year, it's October 15th and 16th in Old Town, Eureka, we're having it at the Inn at Second and C, and the two themes are cannabis planning, of course, quite a bit of expertise up here on that, and also housing. So we have quite a few speakers, we have someone from Cannabis Control, the Senator Mike McGuire, Director of Planning here, and quite a few field tours as well on both themes. And the reason I'm calling is that we haven't received any registrations from, excuse me, Lake County yet, so I thought I'd call in and let you know about the conference and the dates, so that you could perhaps discuss it with your planning director. Your director should have received the information before, typically the planning department funds the planning commissioners to attend. There are also several workshops, so it's of great benefit usually to planning commissioners, so there's a CEQA update, for example, that's going to be focused on mitigation measures, there's a workshop on how to become a planning commissioner, if you have any new planning commissioners. So, so yes, it's October 15th and 16th, the website is the ccpc.org, and you can find an updated schedule there and all the information you might be looking for. That's it, thank you, do you have any questions?
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
No questions, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the information, that's very interesting.
All right, well, thank you, well, hope to see some of you up here soon.
Thank you. Thanks for your time this morning.
Oh, thank you. Bye.
Do we have any citizens' input in the chambers?
No, we do not.
Okay, well, 9:05 AM item, public hearing to consider major use permit, UP 19-48, initial study IS 19-68, applicant owner Blue Oaks Farms LLC, applicant is applying for a total of 89,620 square feet of outdoor canopy area within a 2.65 acres cultivation area, project includes storage sheds, security, portable toilets, and two 2,500 gallon water tanks, location 1756 Augalian Canyon Road, Clear Lake, California. Staff.
Good morning, commissioners. Go ahead and start a PowerPoint. So this is for a major use permit, the applicant is Blue Oaks Farm LLC, and this is located in seven, uh, it's, okay, so this is located in 1756 Augalian Canyon Road, Clear Lake Oaks. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So we're going to go over the following agenda items, project description, project settings, project analysis, environmental review, findings, and recommendations. Next slide, okay. The applicant is requesting an approval for two A-type 3 outdoor to allow up to two acres of outdoor, and an A-type 1C license type to allow up to 25 mature plants within the approximate 2.6 acres cultivation area. The proposal also include the following ancillaries listed in the slide and the staff report. Prior to operation, the applicant will need to apply for several permits in order to move forward with the project, including a grading permit and building permit, which will be coming from the Community Development Department. Other permits and authorization will include, but not limited to, Lake County Air Quality Management District, Lake County Environmental Health, and state licenses such as the Water Board and/or remain in enrollment with the Water Board and the Bureau of Cannabis Control. The project setting, the project is located off of Augalian Canyon Road, which is north of City of Clear Lake, there are several active and permitted cannabis operation around the area currently. One is located southeast of the proposed location, the surrounding areas are zoned rural residential and rural lands with some residential dwelling, some agricultural use, including commercial cannabis operations. A site visit was conducted on February 20th of 2020 and again in October of the same year with code enforcement to verify existing conditions. The applicant was issued early activation for the first time, but was not issued the second time, they did not cultivate. The project site will take place within an undeveloped area, the project description includes vegetation clearing and approximately 18 trees to be trimmed, the proposed site was previously disturbed and used for grazing land, and the area consists of non-native grasslands. Go ahead and next slide. Staff reviewed the project for concurrence with the following listed and determined that it is consistent with the Lake County General Plan, Shoreline Community Area Plan, and zoning ordinance. The applicant is proposing commercial cannabis cultivation, which applies to agricultural and crop production with the Lake County General Plan for agriculture and rural lands. Commercial cannabis cultivation is in allowable use within these land use designation and is located properly to support the use, the project is located in a rural area where the practice of cultivation and crop production is common under this designation. The proposed project meets the objectives laid out in the Shoreline Community Area Plan to address the following policies listed in the slide. The applicant has demonstrated that there is sufficient water sourced with from existing wells for the proposed project by providing the proper documents as listed in the local zoning ordinance under Article 27 for commercial cannabis cultivation. The property management plan includes proposed irrigation measures, methods, and water conservation techniques to minimize the amount of irrigation water used. In addition, measures have been included that require the applicant to prepare a groundwater management plan and install a meter to monitor the water level in the well. Additionally, the drought management plan involves conservation measures that can also be found in the drought management or the water usage section of the property management plan submitted on December 12, 2019. The measure proposed by the applicant include irrigating only during the early morning hours or before sunset, in a case of severe drought, the applicant proposed to reduce the cultivation and/or length of the cultivation season, install additional water storage and/or implement new conservation techniques. Lastly, the project is located in a farmland designation for grazing lands and does not contain prime agricultural soil, which results in preserving areas containing prime land for more traditional agricultural crops. In the staff report, there is a mis-type on the date of the applicant applied, as it was in December, and the use permit is UP 1948. However, it is as follows that the project is in allowable use under Article 27 for zoning designation rural lands, the applicant will need to apply for either a major use permit and meet all the addressed, meet all the requirement addressed in the zoning ordinance in order to qualify for approval. To qualify for a major use permit, the project must demonstrate that all regulation within Article 27.7 are met or adequately mitigated, however, Article 7 does not specify the use of specific crops such as cannabis cultivation operation, but details of regulatory compliance are detailed within Article 27. This project has demonstrated that it meets the requirement under these articles. The following development standards and general requirements are addressed within the staff report. The initial study found that the project could potentially cause significant impact and addresses the following bullets in the slide that can be found in Attachment 5, as well as in the staff report. The project proposed attempts to incorporate a minimal impacts to the environment, however, mitigation measures are implemented to ensure that the project would not result in potential significant impact. Due to the site being undeveloped, this may include the following as listed in the staff reports, such as new sources of light within the area that would impact the aesthetics of the area for security measures. Pre-construction and site preparation for this cultivation area includes fugitive dusts and emissions from vehicles to the site for soils and traffic, odor will be generated by the plant as a long-term impact. A possible, a possibility for sensitive species and cultural resources may occur or observe during the development, the handling of any hazardous materials and the potential that may reach the waterway. The noise from construction can be a nuisance, however, staff determined that all impacts listed can be mitigated and reduced to less than significant through the property management proposal provided by the applicant, complying with the federal, state, and local regulations during the permitting process, as well as the additional measures listed in the staff report. The reviewing authority can only approve and conditionally approve a major use permit if the following findings listed on the slides are made. The project is actually surrounded by other permitted cannabis operations and meet all the regulatory setbacks for the proposed location. The proposed ancillaries are situated in relatively flat area of the proposed site and meets the acreage requirement per zoning ordinance. The road can accommodate for the use and provide adequate public and private services by complying with the Public Resource Code 4290 road standards. The project does conform with the provision and policies of the Lake County Code, General Plan, and approved zoning that had been addressed within the staff report. There are no known violation of the following chapters listed in the staff report and complies with all additional findings of the use permit. Staff recommends that the planning commission take the following action to adopt the mitigated negative declaration IS 1968 for a major use permit, UP 1948, with the following findings found in Attachment 6, five, I'm sorry. Staff also recommends the approval of the major use permit UP 1948 for the following findings on the previous slide.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff at this moment?
No, I don't believe so, but I do believe we have the applicant and possibly their consultant in chambers, just to let everybody know.
I have a few questions, actually, sorry, I thought you had some questions. So, the zone is in very high wildland fire hazard severity zone. In the case of a fire emergency, what are your evacuation plans or any plans to protect, you know, your investment that you will have in that area?
Thank you. Let me, yeah, let me introduce myself, I'm Richard Knoll, I'm a planning consultant located in Lakeport, and I want to introduce my client, the owner of the project, Kim Gardner, and also want to mention that we have other team members who have worked on this project who are listening in and online and who can respond to questions and issues as well, including Angie Dodd, PhD, Vice President of North Point Consulting Group Incorporated out of Arcata, so she's here to answer any questions that you might have. Specifically regarding your question about evacuation plans and approaches, there actually is a secondary way out of this project, the primary access is off of a developed driveway easement from Augalian Canyon Road, which is located west of the project site, so access is gained by going up a hill to the site, but there is a secondary way out, I guess that would be to the southeast to develop roadway that eventually, I think, circles back to Augalian Canyon, it may actually go farther south, not actually traveled it, but it is available for, you know, vehicular travel.
So, the other question I have, I believe they said 18 trees will be not cut, but trimmed. Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Right. The site, and I actually have full application materials and documents on a thumb drive if need be. I wasn't going to go through a full presentation. I do have a PowerPoint and numerous photos if you'd like to see them. But the site is got a cover of oak trees and the photo that you saw here this morning is actually an old photo. What has been done is that the site has been really well maintained. The trees have been trimmed, professionally trimmed and limbed, and the underbrush, the ground cover has been mowed and kept low to the ground. All the brush and limbs that were cut off the trees have been chipped and cleared. So it's a really well-maintained site. And I've got a photo of that again if you'd like to see that. But suffice to say, it's well-defined and in good shape in terms of vegetation control.
Yeah, so that answered my first question as well with the potential fire hazards, that the area was cleared and setbacks from the grass side will be, you know, like the grasses and...
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. You refer to hazardous material storage, and I guess this is more a question about farming methodology. What hazardous materials are we talking about?
Well, everything...
Make sure you state your name. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This is Kim Gardner, manager of Blue Oaks LLC. The, so, they're actually organic materials.
They're Amory-approved?
Yeah. Yet still, the state requires us to say that they're hazardous because I'm sure if you drank them, probably wouldn't be great. But they're all organic. It's going to be an organic farm. So, and it's not, they don't allow any pesticides or anything for testing. You fail testing if you use anything like that.
I was just wondering also if you're going to have any fuel storage on-site or...
Not planning to.
Okay.
But if we do, it would be in, you know, the required containment area. Sorry.
Yeah, just to answer that question a little better, I mean, there may be a need for some minor fuel storage associated with, let's say, a gas trimmer or something. But all of that is required to be within a stormproof enclosure locked. And, you know, so it's all pretty well-defined in terms of how it's stored and addressed.
Great, thank you.
One more question.
Commissioner Brown, I have a few questions. First, starting with Ogallin Canyon Road. Is that road a public road or is it a privately-owned road? And second, I guess we'll follow up on that question, is there have been a number of comments in public forums and regarding transits staying on Ogallin Canyon Road. I did happen to drive out about two weeks ago, notice a man camping with a truck, cooking with an open flame. And so, I'm wondering if the road is public after it's private and who's going to be responsible for any issues to address that person that's staying out there on the road?
Thank you for the question. I don't know the situation with the individual. There are other cannabis operations and other businesses in the area. But as far as I know, Ogallin Canyon Road is a publicly-traveled road. I don't know what the status of the actual, is it right-of-way or is it an easement? I know that the access road to this site is defined as an easement. There is a recorded document that confirms that. So, you know, I guess the answer with respect to any transients that may be out there, you know, that if they're causing issues, that might be a law enforcement issue. I don't know. And they might be associated with other operations or other facilities in the area, but I'm not really sure about who they are or who they're associated with. Yeah, and by the way, Kim just mentioned something, that there are gates. In fact, to this site, there's a main gate, I call it the big iron gate, on Ogallin Canyon Road that is typically locked. And then, the access roadway driveway to this site has at least two additional gates that you have to go through. And I've noticed, not that I've been out there a ton, but I've noticed that they are locked. The main gate is normally locked. There is a condition of approval that does require a Knox box to be installed for emergency access. That will be done, and so, you know, it will allow for that kind of access to the site.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I just wanted to raise the question, and this is coming off of 20 to 53, it's the first left-hand turn, and it's kind of historically been an area where cars have been dumped, trash has been dumped, and so, not to blame this specific project, but just trying to see if anybody was aware of this operation that that was happening. Thank you for those answers.
This is Commissioner Hess with a couple of questions. Richard, so no trees will be removed, only trimmed?
Well, I, at this point in time, I believe the answer is yes. No trees will be removed. The intent and the limbing and trimming of the trees has opened the site up. The trees, my guess, as to the age of the trees, they're probably 25, 30 years old. I don't know if there was a fire that went through here at one time. I think that is the case. But the trees are not super mature. There's a lot of sun exposure. I don't believe there's any intent to remove trees.
Thank you. Just one other question. It sounds as though the applicant will be seeking a grading permit, and, you know, typically, if not too much grading is to be done, a permit isn't even required. And if this has already disturbed land, so to speak, how much grading do you anticipate having to do?
We actually submitted a grading plan about a month ago or two, month and a half ago, done by civil engineer Bill Vanderwall. At this point in time, there's some grading, a minor amount of grading that is proposed now. And there's a well-maintained, developed road that goes right down the center of the site, and it's already in place. There's a turnaround at the end. So, no grading within the canopy area needed.
Thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify that I did see in the staff report that the site is served by Ogallin Canyon Road, a paved city and county-maintained road. And I believe she also stated that grading and building permits will be required. Just clarifying.
One last question for me.
Go ahead.
So, for water usage, the staff report says you have 50 gallons per minute. When was this test conducted?
Not too long ago.
I have a copy of the well report. I just need to be able to find it. Yeah, we also...
It's been the last year, probably the last six months.
We did also submit, oh, here we go. This report actually was initially done in March of 2017. The well driller, Will Peterson Well Driller, and he documented a well test, 50 gallons per minute.
And that was in 2017 when it was initially dug?
Pardon me?
And that was done in 2017 when it was initially dug?
That's what this well report indicates. Kim is indicating there's been a more recent report, well report, but I...
With a GPM, gallons per minute, excuse me, and all of that.
We also submitted a hydrology report consistent with what the county is now requiring for all projects, and that report documented sufficient water supply and recharge of the aquifer.
Okay. And from that most recent well report, the gallons per minute was close to the 50 or the same?
Yeah, actually, it was a little bit over.
Okay.
But our pump was rated for that.
All right, thank you.
So if we have no further questions from the commission, I'd like to open it up to the public for comment. Do we have anybody in chambers?
I don't believe anybody in chambers wishes to speak on this item at this time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody in the Zoom? Jake?
I currently have no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comments, bring it back to the commission for discussion or any further questions.
No further questions?
Okay, if we have no further questions, we can entertain a motion or take some action on the item?
I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit, UP 19-48, applied for by Blue Oak Farm LLC, on property located on 1756 Ogallin Canyon Road, further described as APNs 010-055-46, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration will, shall be approved within the findings listed in the staff report dated September 23, 2021.
Second?
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit, UP 19-48, applied for by Blue Oak Farms LLC, on property located on 1756 Ogallin Canyon Road, further described as APNs 010-055-46, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1, ATIIGI, of the Lake County zoning ordinance and major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated September 23, 2021.
Second?
Second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Okay, I'd like to note that the applicant or interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-counter day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5 p.m., on or before the seven-counter day final commission's final determination.
Mr. Chair, one second, please.
Yeah, I just meant to say this earlier. I just want to thank staff and the planning commission for their work and your consideration. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, while the applicant leaves the podium, and I believe staff's going to kind of switch out, can I please request a four-minute break?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Thank you. If I could have everybody, please take your seats, and we'll get a little situated and turn it over to the chairman. We are all seated.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to take up our mine 10 item, Public Care and Decelerated Major Use Permit, MUP 20-27, and an appeal of early... and an appeal of early activation, file number AA 21-03. Applicant Flower Lady Farms, owner Malcolm Duchesne, proposed project A Type 2B Small Mixed Light Commercial Cannabis License and A Type 13 Self-Distribution License that would allow legal transportation of cannabis to and from the site location, 12345 Seagull Canyon Road, Middletown, California.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
As your commission has seen, I'm sure, this is listed as two items combined as one. It is a use permit and an appeal for, an appeal of an early activation permit. Those are technically two separate items. They should have been separated out as two separate items, where the use permit is heard on its own and the appeal for the early activation permit is heard on its own. What I would recommend for your commission, you do have a number of options. Always you can continue the item and ask staff to separate them out. You may also trail the use, I mean, the appeal, excuse me, the appeal till after the use permit. Hear the use permit first and then address, and then hear the appeal second. And the reason that is an option is because under 27.4 of the zoning ordinance, let me pull it up so I can give you the language exactly. 27.4 Early Activation of Use Section, Part D, as in DOG, states that an early activation permit shall be active for six months or it will expire at the end of that six months or expire when and if your commission makes a final decision on the accompanying or parallel use permit. So once the use permit is either approved or denied, the early activation permit would cease to exist. So if you hear the use permit first and there is a decision on the use permit and there's always the option that there could not be, you could run into issues and ask for a continuance, in which case there would not be a decision, then you would still hear the appeal after that. But if there is a decision on the use permit, either approving it or denying it, then that use permit will no longer exist and the appeal would be mooted because there would be no longer any permit existing to appeal.
And we wouldn't at that time have to even address the early activation?
Correct. It would no longer exist. There would be nothing to appeal. However, the use permit addressed today, assuming there is a final decision one way or the other, would still have its own seven-day appeal period separate from the other early activation permit. So that would still be an option for interested parties.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
So should one of us move to amend the agenda to make that trail?
You could, you could move to trail the appeal till after a decision on the use permit.
That makes sense to me. I would so move.
I'll second that. Okay, I'm in agreement.
Roll call?
I'm not sure if she has to do a roll call vote, but I think we have a consensus to go ahead and move forward.
All in favor, yeah.
Oh, sorry. There are commissioners who are not in the room, who are attending remotely, so it would need to be a roll call vote.
Oh.
Okay, let's get a roll call vote to-
Okay, Commissioner House? Commissioner House?
He's on mute.
Hit your mute button, John.
Aye, sorry.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Mr. Chairman Eric Porter, Associate Planner, County of Lake. I'm assuming it's okay to proceed with the presentation?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. What we have before us is a A Type 2B Small Mixed Light, three-phased commercial cannabis cultivation. Total square footage at the end of Phase 3 of the cultivation area would be 16,680 square feet. And then there are two earlier phases that would have slightly less. Applicants requested one A Type 13 Self-Distribution License and one A Type 4 Nursery License. The property is over 20 acres in size, making it eligible for this license. It's located at 12345 Seagull Canyon Road in Lower Lake. It's served by a shared access driveway that is approximately 20 feet wide, which is compliant with PRC 4290 and 4291 standards. The site's flat at the cultivation site. It is designated, it is zoned rural residential with a wetland. And the wetland part is relevant because there is a federally designated wetland about 300 feet from the existing well on the property, which is the reason that the early activation was appealed. I'm not going to go into the appeal because I may not need to based on the earlier discussion we've had. Although I do need to touch on it because it's relevant to the permit. So what's proposed is a three-phase development, and I've already indicated about 300 feet away is a federally designated wetland. Phase 1 consists of 14,820 square feet, including 27 6x90 low hoop houses, 120-square-foot security shed, and 120-square-foot lockable pesticide and chemical storage shed. Phase 2 would consist of 14,400 square feet, consisting of 18 6x90 low hoop houses, a 1,440-square-foot processing building and a 3,000-square-foot greenhouse for immature plants, which is why the Type 4 Nursery Permit is required. And again, the two sheds that were already mentioned. And then finally, Phase 3 would be 16,680 square feet of, consisting of five 3,000-square-foot greenhouses, a 1,440-square-foot processing building, the sheds for storage and for security. So the vicinity map. Seagull Canyon Road goes around the top of it and it's kind of hard to see it, but there's a shared driveway that feeds the lots. And I believe I counted 11 different properties that are served by this shared access road. The cultivation site's flat. The property is quite a bit larger than the flat area here and it extends roughly to this line here. And again, the property's 23 acres in size. This is zoning of the cultivation site and the existing lots that are around it. They're all zoned rural residential. The site with the wetland on it that's become a point of discussion, if not dispute, is located here. So there's one lot in between the well, which is approximately here, and the start of the wetland, which is essentially at the start of the property. And I can't get it. There it is. Two properties over to the east. And again, here's another graphic showing the wetland site versus a cultivation site. We analyzed the project for compliance with the general plan, the Cobb Mountain Area Plan, and all the applicable zoning ordinance requirements, which are primarily in Article 50, which is minor use permits, and Article 27 Subsection AT, which is the subsection containing all the cannabis rules. They provided a water analysis. This is really important because of the wetland. It was prepared by Realm Engineering dated September 7th. It evaluated well productivity and water usage. The well is a high-producing well. It actually produces about 120 gallons per minute on average. And that average varies depending on the length of the test. The test was conducted in October of 2020, so it's fairly current. It happened before the rainy season, which is probably indicative of just how rapid of a recharge under drought conditions occurs. Applicants projecting daily usage of 1,369 gallons per day. Annual usage is estimated to be .72 to 1.0 acre-feet per year. One acre foot is 325,821 gallons, by the way, just to put that in context. It evaluated the aquifer capacity and recharge. And the recharge was estimated to be 7.36 acre-feet per year. I don't know if those are drought numbers or if those are non-drought numbers. Typically, an aquifer takes about 15% of the total capacity. It'll recharge by about 15% in a non-drought year. And it's about half that much during a drought year. The water study evaluated the impacts to neighboring sites and concluded that the project would likely not adversely impact the nearby wetland. However, the cultivator has agreed to drill a new well much further away from the neighboring wetland. That's actually a condition number A19 that I added yesterday into the conditions since it was offered by the cultivator. So for minor use permits, similar to major use permits, we have to meet six findings, conditions or criteria for approval, and then three other findings, which are found in Article 27. We notified neighbors within 725 feet of the proposal. And other than the early activation appeal, we've received no adverse comments to date on the application. So the findings that we have to meet, that the use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the neighborhood, that the site is adequate in size, shape, and location for the proposed use, that the streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate for the use. Having trouble reading that one. Number four, that there are adequate public or private services, including but not limited to fire, water, sewage, police protection to serve the project. And I've already indicated that the eastern neighboring property contains a federally designated wetland, which is the only issue, I think, that needs to be resolved with this. They've received an $8.5 million federal grant to restore the wetland. And we required the hydrology report, which was provided to us, which I indicated earlier. And the cultivator is prepared to drill a new well so that it would add much less of an impact to the wetland. Number five, the project is in conformance with the applicable provisions and policies of the code, general plan, and applicable area plan, which in this case, I believe, is a Cobb Mountain Area Plan. And finally, no violations of Chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 of the Lake County Code currently exists on the property. Article 27, there are three findings that need to be made, that the use complies with development standards in Article 27. We believe the water situation is resolved, but that would be up to the planning commission to make that decision. The applicant is qualified to make the application. They've passed live scan, so they're quite qualified to make this application and they are the property owners. And finally, the application complies with the qualifications for a permit found in Article 27. SEQA, we prepared an initial study. It's file number IS 20-112. And we found that there were some potential for impacts to aesthetics, air quality, biological impacts, cultural and tribal hydrological impacts, hazards and hazardous materials, noise, and cumulative impacts. We also found that all of these potential impacts can be mitigated through mitigation measures and conditions of approval. Therefore, oh, all potential impacts can be mitigated. The cultivator has agreed to drilling a well further away from the eastern neighboring wetland. And the property is about 1,000 feet deep, so the well can be significantly moved farther from the eastern property containing the wetland. Consequently, we're recommending that the planning commission adopt IS MND 20-112 and approve minor use permit, UP 20-27, particularly with the new condition A19 added, requiring the second well. So that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Eric. Yes, go ahead.
As your commission, I'm sure, is aware, SEQA requires that phased projects be analyzed in a specific way. If staff, you may want to ask staff to clarify if they actually mean that this project is phased or if they're simply mislabeling parts of a project that has been analyzed to the fullest extent for the whole build-out and they're simply labeling the parts of that project as phases in the order that they're going to be achieved. Because if they are actually phases, it may be that a fuller, a more full SEQA analysis would be necessary.
On completion of those phases?
Well, SEQA requires that the initial project be analyzed and all the parts that can be analyzed to their fullest extent be analyzed at that time. Anything that cannot be known, because a phase by definition is later, and there are things that cannot be known at that time of the initial analysis of the project, that at that time, when that next phase is begun, then a new SEQA analysis is performed at that time for the things that are known at that time in relation to what has already been analyzed. So if that is the case here, that this is truly a phased project, where there are three phases, where there are things that may not be known, that occur later down the line, that may have greater impacts, that should be studied at that time, then a new SEQA analysis would be required at that time. And so you might want to ask staff if, to clarify whether or not they're misusing the label here. And if they're, you could also ask staff to address the impacts of this new mitigation. If a new well is being drilled, then there may be impacts associated with that in relation to impacts of water to the area that that well is being drilled and whether or not that was considered as an impact in this particular project analysis. Thank you, Nicole.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question in my head based on council's comments, but I also wanted to clarify the status of the well, the new well requirement. On page 10 of the staff report, it says that upon issuance of the minor use permit and as soon as feasible, Flower Lady Farms shall obtain a well permit for the proposed groundwater well in the volcanic hills in the western half of the project property. FLF shall contact, contract with a licensed well driller to drill the proposed groundwater as soon as possible if the current declaration of a local emergency due to drought conditions approved by the board of supervisors on May 2021 is extended. If it is not extended, it sounds as though there's the option to drill that well at a later time. Is that well going to be drilled because of that condition of approval? Or is it condition on how long the drought is extended declaration?
I can respond to that, Commissioner. It's intended to be prior to any cultivation occurring under this use permit. So condition number A19 basically says, prior to the activation of this use permit and the start of cultivation under this use permit, the applicant shall drill a second well further west on the site away from the eastern neighboring wetland as stated within the hydrology report prepared by Realm Engineering and dated September 7th, 2021.
Okay. And could you speak to the question about the use of the term phases?
Well, the phases are all within the same footprint. So when staff evaluated Phases 1, 2, and 3, it consisted of the same land area. So there really was no expansion or contraction of one phase to the next to the next. So we had all three phases very clearly depicted in the engineered drawings prepared by Realm Engineering. I was very comfortable with the initial study on this. It was very clear from the start what was going to happen within each phase, all of which was occurring within the same footprint.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Any, do you guys have any other questions before they want to open it up for public comment?
I do have some questions of the applicant, if that's appropriate.
I do have some questions of the applicant, if that's appropriate at this time.
Yeah.
Yeah. So first of all, in Mike, I'm speaking to the, I'm speaking to the agency comments that were in the report. Mike Wink, the fire guy, said that there was a requirement of two 10-foot lanes, but that the road was only 12 feet wide. I believe you addressed that in the presentation. Is that correct?
Well, it measured out on GIS to be 20. So if it's less than 20, it needs to be enlarged.
Yeah, so I did, I did drive in, I did a drive-by on that driveway, and I'm wondering, are we talking about that driveway? Because I'm pretty sure that is not 20 feet wide.
It would need to be enlarged if that's the case.
The fire guy also said that water storage tanks for protection of structures have to be steel or fiberglass. I saw some tanks on site presumably for irrigation. They appear to be plastic, but I don't know. Will steel or fiberglass water tanks be installed? That might be made moot by the new well. I don't know. Want to address this?
Yes, just make sure.
Make sure you state your first and last name.
My name is Trey Sherrill. I'm a consultant working with Flower Lady Farms on this, on this project. Thank you.
I think your mic's off, Trey.
Is that better?
Just speak, like, get closer to it.
Is that, is that better?
It's a little bit.
Can I take this off?
Yeah. That's way better.
I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
You introduced yourself.
Yes. And then, oh, so if you, if you saw on the site plans, yes, those were, those water tanks are for irrigation, the plastic water tanks. Once a structure that triggers compliance with 4290 requirements is constructed, a metal firewater storage tank of up to 5,000 gallons would be installed within 50 feet of it. And, oh, and then the purpose, I wanted to clarify, the purpose of the well, we've been, it's not just to get it further away from the wetland, it's actually to take water from an aquifer that is separate from that of the wetland. The wetland is attached or associated with a superficial aquifer. The proposed well would be located in the volcanic hills that are in the western half of the property. And groundwater in those volcanic, in that volcanic rock is confined, and it would not be considered part of the same water body. All water bodies are linked, but it's, for the purposes of this, it would be considered a separate water body from which they would take the water.
Okay, that, that leads very nicely into my next question. I, I looked at the hydrology report, and there's a lot of boron in the water. And I, then I looked at the toxicity levels for boron for related plants, and of course, there's not a lot of information out on cannabis, but it is related to hackberry. I mean, it, I feel like that's not, that's your problem. But my question is, in this, in the staff report, I believe, I read that this parcel was used for intensive agriculture before. Do you know what that agricultural use was historically?
My name is Skodos Dunche. I'm the applicant, along with my partners Ben Grissow and Christopher Casey. And to our knowledge, there was a farm in the early 80s. In fact, Ben worked there when he was a child. We've been local to this area for decades now, and so we have, yeah, into an experience with that particular farm. It was a truck stop farm for produce. And it had some difficulties with the boron in the water. It had some success with some of the plants, but things like the melons and, I can't remember, some of the other produce had difficulty with the boron levels. I believe Trey included this in the hydrology report. Those levels of boron, which I believe is between 0.9 and 1.3 milligrams per liter or parts per million, is within a close acceptable range. So at this point, we are taking our chances and, and based upon acceptance of our use permit, and as we progress in our project, we'll be looking into ways to treat the water if necessary that would be non-toxic, and it's kind of our plan.
Okay, my concern is that, you know, in, throughout Lake County, we're seeing a lot of people trucking water around. And I want to hear that you don't intend to do that.
We have no intention of trucking water, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question. The California Historical Resources Information System comment called for a historic analysis or consideration of the Hoberg landing strip there. Can you address that?
Trey Sherrill, once again, the, that is on a separate property. And so why, I think they do want, you know, some more historical analysis, archaeological analysis of the, of the Hoberg landing strip that is not on this property. And actually, the landing strip is what separates this property from the wetland. That property is about 300 feet, 300 feet wide approximately, the landing strip property. And I did want to make a clarification. So, yeah, the existing well is approximately 300 feet from the wetland of interest, but the cultivation site would be located over 450 feet from that wetland. And then to the boron, you know, the information that's available is sparse, and it mostly pertains to hemp as opposed to cannabis. And they're, you know, they are the same, they're cannabisia sativa, but they are different too. And what, so cannabis absolutely needs boron to be healthy, but it's a, it's a very fine range. And what we found after writing this report is a lot of fertilizers have boron in it because it's more common for boron deficiency than too much boron and toxicity. Thank you. And, and so I think it's, they'll be, they'll be fine using that water. Well, anyways, we're moving towards a new well, which, from that confined aquifer, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have high boron in it. But let's say they used, they used water from that well. It would, they would just need to pay real close attention to the boron concentrations and any fertilizers or other nutrients that they were, they're using. The, the, the natural concentrations do not appear to be toxic. They just appear to be at, you know, the upper, upper range of that, that window.
Right.
Commissioner Miley, I have a question also. When you brought up the concern over the road, there's the, there's the access road, a non-county maintained dirt road that comes off of Seagull Canyon.
Is that what that is?
And then, and I believe we've gotten tape measures out there, and as Planner Eric indicated, it's, it's over 20 feet wide. And then we have a 12-foot road that is a full wraparound, so there's an ingress and egress. We have, you know, entrance and an outlet. So as far as we understood, that was compliant with, with fire department. So, so in terms of that point, I just wanted to come back to the road access.
Thank you. No, I, it, it looked to me like someone could get by if they needed to. Thank you. I just have one more question. You talked about importing organic matter. What quantities are we talking about? Is this going to be your truckloads and truckloads of?
We brought in, we brought in some, some yards of soil from a local company in Kelseyville in preparation for, for our growing. Because we aren't allowed to go in ground under early activation, so we didn't, we didn't plan for that. We probably would have built raised beds and gone in ground if we'd, if we'd known how the sequence of things might have gone here. So that's the organic matter we brought in. Similar to blue oak farms, any, any sprays that we will use will be OMRI-rated, very little fertilizers. All fertilizers are, you know, cannabis, cannabis is heavily tested and regulated in terms of what you can put into it. So any fertilizers we use will be compliant with the state regulations. And very little runoff. We will be putting ground cover down. We'll be using drip irrigation in terms of, for drought mitigation, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's what I can speak to in terms of organic matter we'll be bringing in.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the volume. I've seen a couple of projects here in Big Valley where there's just trucks bringing in topsoil all day long. And I'm wondering, is that, how much volume we're, we're talking here?
So we evaluated if a, if a grading, we, we did submit an application for a grading permit, but internally, we evaluated if a grading permit was going to be necessary. And so what would trigger the need for a grading permit is if more than 50 cubic yards were going to be imported, or if during the construction of the greenhouses, more than 500 cubic yards were going to be moved. And, and at no time do we anticipate more than 50 cubic yards of import and no more than, and less, much less than 500 cubic yards of earth disturbance.
So about two truckloads, something like that? Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from the commission?
Not at this time.
I do have another, I do have a question, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Hess. In terms of the new well to be drilled, I understand it's separate in terms of being its own aquifer and has less of a tendency to, or potential to affect the wetland in question. But the Realm Report says that a main source of boron in water is leaching from rocks. And I'm wondering if you have any notion about the volcanic rock you would be drilling into for that second well? And if there is, you're, you're kind of rolling the dice. If it's, if it's, the boron is toxic, that's a problem for your crop. But is it going to require further study before you drill that well to determine the nature of the water and the boron content?
From, as best as we can tell, boron binds to organic material. That's why the concentrations are higher in sedimentary rock. Yes, the boron, the source of the boron is, is from the, you know, the native rock surrounding the area, but it concentrates in the sedimentary soils of, of the valley there. So we are not anticipating any issues at all, and we are anticipating very low concentrations of boron from the new well in the volcanic aquifers.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? If there is none, we'll open it to public comment.
I do believe we have someone in chambers who wishes to speak.
Thank you.
You can approach the podium, and please be sure to state your first and last name.
Do you mind if I take my mask off? Thank you. I'm Steve Zaleski. I'm the principal biologist for Coast Range Wetlands. We also own Northwest BioSurvey. Ironically, we do probably the bulk of the biological surveys for your cannabis projects in the county, so clearly we don't, per se, have any issues with cannabis banks. If I could, you showed a picture earlier, the vicinity map. I think I could, that would be helpful unless that's not handy to get up.
I think if you go further, there's one that actually.
Yeah, there's a larger one further.
Yeah, that one right there.
That's good enough, although I think you had one that showed the whole area, but, if I may, and. So this is.
Give me a second. I have to share it to the other.
Sure.
Yes, we're good to go.
Okay. Obviously, Flower Lady Farms. Here's the well site. This is the old Hobergs Airport runway. That's why there's this narrow bowl.
Just a second.
Sorry. So let me kind of borrow your. People that are on. Oh, sorry about that. And I've had my shots, so I'm just temper-free. All right. Good?
That's way better.
Thank you. Sorry. I used to teach college, and I learned how to shout, but this is the worst. So this long narrow, the reason it's this long narrow thing, it's the old right-of-way for the Hoberg, Hobergs Airport. In the Pleistocene, back when mastodons and saber-toothed tigers were here, this was all a big lake. And 11,000 years since then, and it's done what most of these little valleys did, it's filled in. Back in the late 1800s, this valley was ditch-drained for hay cultivation, and then in the mid-'40s, drained further to create the old Hobergs Airport. What we did was to, in this restoration project, and let me say, there's a little misunderstanding. This isn't under a federal grant. Believe me, I wrote the huge checks to purchase this and develop the project. This is paid for by the sale of wetland mitigation credits. So that's what pays for the restoration. So it's self-contained. It's, it did require five years of federal permitting. If you think your permitting process might be a little bit of a pain, try five years with every agency that you never knew existed. So what we did was we essentially dammed the drainages, restored the original hydrology, and put in a riparian forest and a number of other things. If I can, and, so we're right here, this runway right-of-way along with the roadway is about 300 feet. If I may, and I'll do this as quickly as possible, I can kind of draw a little schematic that shows what our issues are. And in a nutshell, so if, we can turn the lights back on and get rid of this, if you And I believe there's a marker. Thank you. So, can you, if we say this is the groundwater level, here's the slopes to the west, Flower Lady Farms, the roadway, drops down, there's a little wetland runway, and then our wetland project. Here's our fence line, Flower Lady Farms fence line. Here is the current depth to groundwater. It's about 10 feet. And the reason this water is up here is, one of the huge benefits of restoring a wetland is you recharge the groundwater level. And so rather than this water draining away into drainage ditches as it has since the 1800s, we've now refilled this basin and brought the water levels up, which is a big part of our restoration. So current water level is 10 feet. During the well test, they dropped down to 57 feet. That was their maximum sustained level. It's 2.2 feet per gallon per minute per foot. And the effect there is called a cone of depression. When you drill a well, the groundwater does a cone of depression. And based on the hydrology report, that stops at our fence line. And the reason this is, this is maintainable is that water's rushing in to replace it. Obviously, the deeper you go, the more head pressure there is on that water. You get deep enough, then the water's rushing in as fast as you're taking it out. And clearly, you know, this cone of depression, water's refilling it from the basin from all directions. So the further out you go, the slower. But, and then this doesn't stay there. That's like digging a hole in water. Obviously, it fills back in. So the minute you stop drilling, all this water flows back in. And clearly, you know, the water level has to drop. If you have $100 in the bank and you take $5 out, you don't still have $5 or $100 in the bank. The, the water level drops. This is why it's critical to us, particularly during a drought, but really at all times. I mentioned this to a friend of ours, and I told him I'd steal his quote. He said, "This is California in the 25th." He said, "This is California in the 21st century. If we're not in a drought, we're waiting for the next drought." This is, and the reason all this works is this is an unconfined aquifer. It's in, it's in contact with surface waters. What we would like, and, and the applicants generously agreed, is that at some point, you've got an impermeable layer here. We know that, since this was a lake, it's full of Clear Lake clays, those are impermeable, it's like the bottom of a pool. We want them to drill down, get water from this area, it's not continuous with this, would not affect our water. The one concern we had tonight, I think it was answered earlier, but I want to be certain, we don't want the drilling of this well depending on whether or not a drought emergency continues. We need it drilled as a condition of approval. If you want to water your wetland, we really don't want it impacting our wildlife preserve and restored wetland. And, and the way to do that is to go to a confined aquifer, drill your well back in the volcanics, you know, below the clay layer and whatever aqua-clued, whatever capping layer there is there, we're good with that. And clearly, you know, the appeal would be coming up later. Our goal is, we don't have a problem with the project, we think it needs to be tweaked, we'd like to avoid an appeal. So, step one, we'd really like to see this as a condition of approval, that the well be drilled. And that your water come from that, and that at no point is it dependent on water from this unconfined aquifer. So, so that's one. The other issue, and I was a county planner actually here for 13 years, and your county environmental officer and a senior planner elsewhere. And this is an issue that I don't think I ever had to address. And you hit on it earlier, and that is boron. And I've done some work on this. Average boron in drinking water runs between .1 and .03 milligrams per liter, same as parts per million, in drinking water. The California notification level is 1 milligram per liter, 1 part per million. The EPA health reference dose, that's the dose above which, or below which they say there's unlikely to be a health risk at any level of use during, during a day. The EPA health reference dose is 1.4 milligrams per liter. The boron tests were 1.3. So you're, one, and that, keep in mind, these levels fluctuate depending on what's going on. At the time that well test was done, it was 1.3. It could commonly be below that, it could occasionally be above that. I can tell you, I would not want to drink the water. There are significant health effects, and one thing, plants accumulate boron, particularly in the leaves, which isn't particularly great for growing cannabis. And the health, the effect is, and you guys hit on it earlier, too little, it's actually a plant nutrient, too little, there's problems, too much, there are problems. With animals, it's always a problem, it's toxic, it accumulates in the bone. The health effects are primarily on male reproductive systems. At certain levels, they stop sperm productions, higher levels is actual atrophy of the seminiferous tubules, you stop, I guess, permanently producing sperm. There are other impacts. So the question is, and I talked to the Bureau of Cannabis Control to look for standards, frankly, they have them for heavy metals. Boron's the only member of Group 13 of the periodic table that isn't a metal, but it does accumulate. And they said, "It's just too common, too uncommon of an issue for them to have had standards." So, and I said, "Well, how do you deal with this?" Their amazing response was, "Well, that's up to the local permitting agency during the SEQA process." So somehow, you're supposed to become experts on this health issue. I'm, I have a master's in biology and a career in that. Where would I go with it? You know, I don't know. But the question is, you have to get all your water on site. What do you do with that issue? Is it a health and safety concern? I don't know. I know that at 1.3 milligrams per liter, I sure wouldn't drink it. I know that cannabis accumulates it. And apparently, the period when you make this decision is when you're approving the use permit through SEQA. That seems rather odd to me, and it seems someone should have a standard. If I was the planner on this, and years ago I would have been, I guess I'd say, "We need to resolve this issue. Who the expert is you find to deal with this? I don't know. But obviously, there's someone who studies this. It's not with the Bureau of Cannabis Control, which you'd think it would be. But it's an issue that should be addressed. The downside is, if you can't address this, where are you going to get your water? This basin was a geothermal, is geothermally influenced. In the 70s, they drilled a geothermal well here, it turned out the water wasn't hot enough, and there wasn't enough of it for a commercial well. But it is hydrothermally active, and what that means is, heavy metals, it's hot water, there's heavy metals and other materials leached out in that. If you drill your well, the odds are possibly pretty good, you're going to be drilling into the source of boron. And I think one of your commissioners brought that up earlier. I believe you need to deal with that. It's not directly an issue for us. It is only if you need to get your water elsewhere. And I can tell you, all the time, water trucks stop at Siegler Creek, which borders our property, and pull water out illegally. So that's a big source of water there. So, I'm, and I apologize, I'm sort of dropping this in your laps, where do you go with that? Is it a health and safety risk? Maybe not, I don't know. I'm not qualified to make that judgment, but I think probably someone should have a look at it. And, and with regard to just finishing up here, our concerns, and we'd really like to not appeal this, but we do think there's more work to do. First of all, three things we'd like in the permit, I don't think are too hard of a thing to accomplish. One is, make the drill, the well into the unconfined, into the confined aquifer a condition of approval, and, and not subject to whether or not there's a continuing drought emergency. Second, our wetland's a wildlife preserve, and we have two sensitive species there, western pond turtle, foothill, yellow-legged frog, and that's unfair to all the rest of the wild, wildlife that lives there, which is also great. Use of pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers, we'd really like your operation to be organic. It's really, you can be really careful, but ultimately, you've got, you know, sheet flow from any site, and eventually that stuff can get into the wetland, and that would be not good for us. The last issue, and I'll go and thank you for your patience, is lighting. Lighting is a much underrated impact on wildlife. If you light up an area at night, you dramatically reduce wildlife use. We have bears, mountain lions, deer, all the small mammals that you can imagine. If you light this up for security brightly, it will have an impact on wildlife use of the wetland and the surrounding area. There's certainly, and this is an issue I dealt with as a planner all the time, you can certainly have the lighting directed just down on your facility, I realize you have a need for security, but you can put in the lighting so that it doesn't extend beyond your boundaries. And, and that's our presentation, unless there are questions, thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we do have another person who wishes to speak on this item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
You're still live.
Your mic, your mic's still live, just so you know.
Hello, my name is Richard Durham. I'm a cultivator, realtor, and a cultivation consultant. I'm also a neighbor, I live on Siegler Canyon Road, and I'm quite familiar with this right here. One thing that wasn't mentioned about that aquifer is Mellow Creek. It's a spring right across Big Canyon Road, which is right there. And it's one of the very few creeks in the United States that runs in two different directions. So, it was very interesting to me, for the last 30 years I've lived there, I've watched it. So, to replenish that aquifer, you have a full-time, 365-day spring that flows right into it. So, I don't think that removing a little bit of water from that aquifer is going to really impact that particular wetland. It also, on the other side of their proposed project, is a gigantic spring, which causes Siegler, I mean, yeah, Siegler Canyon Creek, or Siegler Creek to flow. So, there's plenty, plenty of surface water to replenish that aquifer from the wetlands. And as far as the geothermal, I managed a farm just down the way, which was Howard's Hot Springs, and I installed it, designed it, installed it. And yes, they did drill a geothermal well there, and it was successful actually, at 7,000 feet, but at the time they drilled it, they didn't have the capacity to be able to get a casing down to operate it, because the soils kept collapsing. So, and there are many hot springs in the area also, so. I don't think water's going to be an issue, and as far as the boron in the water, that's mitigatable. There are Watson wells, there's several other people in the area that can mitigate that water through filtration, so. With that, I'm really happy to see them here. This is a fallow farmland, and the highest and best use, as far as my real estate career is, I'd like to see Lake County land being used correctly. There's going to be a good tax revenue for the county, and otherwise, the property would sit in there fallow. Thank you.
Can you state your name again, please? I didn't catch it.
Richard Durham.
Thank you.
I'm Malcolm Dunshee, I'm SCOTUS's father. And you can see, there's a lot of people that are here today, they're all here supporting Flower Lady. And I suspect there's other people online. This is a project that's going to make something that's fallow into something that's going to create community and opportunity, and God knows, we need that in this county. I know the guy who retired from Duncan Pump told me, because we had to remove the old Chevy six-cylinder with the right angle drive for the old well pump, that they were getting 150 gallons a minute when they tested it. And so, whatever you've done, Steve, it didn't increase the water table, it's decreased. And I suspect strongly that's from the lake vineyards, not from pulling 1,500 gallons a day. So, anyway, I really want this project to go forward because frankly, what else is there in this county? Old people, vineyards, vineyards, well, we've got a lot of those. The walnuts are gone, pears are diminishing. I want to see these guys do it, they're, they're, they're the future of this county, other than if we want to get into some of the negative things that go on around here. So, go guys. Oh, did I, yeah, I said my name.
My name is Robert Rothmich, I'm a neighbor. I live on, on the hill above the farm. And so, for starters, I've known the applicants since they were young, they're local, they're local Lake County natives, grew up here, their, their families are here. So it's a very local, community-based operation. In, in our neighborhood, in the Valley Fire, we lost 50 out of 60 homes, and it's been a, it's been a big rebuild. People have come back a lot, but people have left. And I feel that, that the farm and the business is a real plus, that it's going to draw people, young people, energy back to the neighborhood, jobs, prosperity for the neighborhood. Yeah, and just, just the character of, of the applicants, I've watched them this year go through all the, the applications and the hard work it's taken to, to do this right. And, and I took a tour of the farm, they have this spectacular solar array that they're using to, to power the farm, so there's many good qualities about it that, that you can see.
I do have someone else approaching the podium. Good morning, you can come up.
Okay.
Be sure to state your first and last name, please.
I will.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Reed, I'm a neighbor, I own what was Bonanza Springs Resort, and I'm right next to both Flower Lady and Fumay. I support cannabis growth in Lake County for a variety of reasons, one of which it uses less water than grapes, the other is that it has very strong economic benefits for Lake County. I've known these gentlemen for a long time. What I like about them is their integrity and their use of positive methods for growing their crop. We need solar, we need irrigation methods that are using less and less water, and these gentlemen are behind that completely. I like to see the county develop those kinds of policies. The lady asked about fertilizer, and the gentleman asked for organic, they totally support that kind of a thing, and therefore I urge you all to approve their application. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? My name is Helen Pangeli, and I live up the road from the flower gardens, Flower Ladies. And I just want to say that I, I've known these kids since they were little, and, and know what kind of integrity they're bringing to this project. The fact that they are here applying for all of these permits is a sign of their integrity. And they're, the place that they're building this farm is a rural area, it's, it's away from all the riffraff of the city where there are no degenerates living in the area, no homeless people living in the area. It's off the road, so it's not easily accessible, which makes it more of a private safety issue for me, which is a good thing. I think it's going to benefit the neighborhood, because number one, it's going to provide a lot of jobs for young people, which in the county, this is the poorest county in California. And if it can do that, then it will also provide business for the local business people, because since the 2015 fire, a lot of the businesses have gone under and are in real serious jeopardy from not having a lot of people give them the business. So, I think that's going to be good for business in the neighborhood. And also, I think it will create a lot of revenue for Lake County, and Lake County needs the revenue, given the fact that it is the poorest county, which use a lot more water than the cannabis industry. use a lot more water than the cannabis industry. So for those reasons, given their integrity with this project, I think, I think it would behoove the county to give them this permit. And I'm all for it. Thank you.
Good morning. I would just also like to, my name is William Gilgallen. I just wanted to also add my support for Flower Lady Farms. I'm, I'm a neighbor of the farm, living just a few blocks away. I'm also good friends with the, the leadership. I've known Ben, Sco and Chris for going on 20 years. Three of those years, I've lived in a household with Ben, during which time I got to know him really well. Ben has always impressed me as a person with great integrity, honesty, and he's a very reliable person. He also is very community-oriented. He's got a strong, deep concern for community and the community in which he lives. During the valley fire, Ben chose to stay behind and help put out spot fires around the houses in the neighborhood in which he lived, even though the house he was living in at the time, he did not himself own. He, he also told me that his intention for Flower Lady Farms is to eventually make it into a cooperative business and thereby providing jobs for the community. So I would just like to say, I truly believe that Flower Lady Farms, with the, the leadership of Ben, Chris and Sco, all of whom have great integrity, would be a good thing for the community and a real asset to Lake County in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak before we open it up to the Zoom room? Okay, I don't see anybody approaching the podium. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Jake. Can we have any potential hands in the Zoom room?
All right, I will start going through the hands raised in the Zoom room. We do have a phone caller, so if the, you dial in via phone and we'd like to raise your hand, please dial a star nine on your handset. Otherwise, the first hand I have raised is from William Stranger. William, I've given you permission to speak.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairman Brown, Commissioners, County Council. I'm, I'm a property owner. I'm the development that overlooks Seagull Canyon. I lost my home in the valley fire of 2015, and I'm now renting a home on North Seagull Valley. While living there, I, my wife and I would almost daily walk the road that leads to this particular cannabis cultivation and enjoy the wetlands, the wildlife, just the fresh air. And I would say that the, all of us who live on Shenandoah Road are really form an intimate community. Many people have come back, rebuilt. I haven't rebuilt yet, but I will. And so the integrity of Seagull Canyon, Seagull Valley is important to us in terms of our life and our well-being. And I would say that we could not find any more trustable people than Chris, Scotus and Ben to maintain that. I, I also have known them since their, their youth. I know the education they have. I know the values they share in terms of the environment and in terms of the community. And I also know that you've heard a lot of people speak about their integrity. And it's true, unfortunately, none of them were able to succumb to the juvenile delinquency most of us enjoyed in our youth. So they had to, they did waste those years on being good, good, upstanding young men. But the, the truth of the matter is, I would say that they could be regarded as stewards of the land. It's just inconceivable to us with knowing their parents and their families that it would be anything less than the, kind of the most positive expression of values at all levels, environmentally, community-wise, economically and so on. So with my own concern about the integrity of the area, when I rebuild, I intend to walk that road again with my wife in the evening. It's wonderful. I would feel absolutely confident about their, this, this county and this planning commission granting them authority to proceed. And I would expect honestly, that just like the issues that Mr. Sodelski expressed relative to the possibility of boron contamination of plants, these guys would be the first before any legal agency even required of them to test for the health and integrity of the product that they would make available to human beings. Not the last, but the very first. That's just who they are. So thank you very much.
All right, the next hand I have raised up is from Duncan Yamlin. Duncan, I've given you permission to speak and asked you to unmute. All right, looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Duncan Gamlin, and my property address is 13745 Perrini Road. Perrini Road is on the ridge above the wetlands, the old Hobart Airport and the site that's under review. I have a full view of them. I've actually been on site. I was invited onto the farm. I found it to be very well organized, neat and clean, self-sustaining for power. I was very, very impressed with it. It's very quiet. I've also known Scotus and Ben since they were babies. I used to babysit for Ben when he was a toddler. I don't know if that carries any weight. But I know these gentlemen. I find them to be men of intelligence, competent and responsible. And I fully support their endeavor here and have complete confidence that they will always do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, and the next hand I have up here is from Aaron. Aaron, I've given you permission to speak and asked you to unmute. Looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah, hi, this is Aaron McCarrick in Clear Lake. I hope you guys can hear me.
Yes, thank you, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you. So this, I am commenting in support of the applicants, applicants, and also in support of their communication with the, the Wetlands Project and the biologist. The presentation that the biologist gave impacts their property, but it also, I have familiarity with working with other farms in the area. And the boron issue is an issue for all, a lot of the farms out there. And they are, there's a lot of scientific research in the cannabis community to address this because it is beneficial to plants, but it's finding that right balance where you're able to, you know, find the nutrients that the plant needs and not lock out anything else and not damage the plant. So there is a lot of advancements in that regard, and it's a industry-wide issue. So I have faith that they will continue to work with the biologists and meet the conditions that are not only relevant to that property, but also the surrounding areas. I know there's groundwater basins, but groundwater is an issue to everyone in the region. Additionally, as another speaker brought up, the, not necessarily about the cannabis industry testing requirements, but about the gentleman would be, have integrity to do testing. The testing requirements for cannabis are remarkably strict. So there is nothing that's going to go to the public that's going to be contaminated or detrimental to anybody ingesting the product. So just a support of the great communication between this Wetlands Project and the applicants and the surrounding neighbors. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Planning Commissioners. And thank you.
All right, the next hand I have up is from Steve. Steve, I've given you permission to speak and asked you to unmute. Oh, looks like you're muted. Please confirm your first and last name.
My name is Steve Alexander, and I'm a property owner on Shenandoah Road, which is pretty much directly above the project. And I've been a resident of the area for over 30 years. And I have to say that one of the most unhappy moments apart from the valley fire that I've experienced over those 30 years was the development of Snow's Lake Vineyard. I felt that the way the property was developed just engulfed, engulfed so much beautiful land that, that, you know, I've enjoyed for, for so many years. And my understanding is that that project was recently purchased by a larger corporation. I'm speaking to, to voice my support for Flower Lady Farms because I know that the, the principles of Flower Lady have the community interest at heart. And I know that even above their own personal entrepreneurial interests, they care more for the community, they're not going to sell that project down the road to some big corporation like Marlboro or whoever. I know that, you know, big cannabis is not far down the road if it's not already happening now. And I would much rather have a, a locally-owned, small company that cares for the community be, be there than someone else. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
All right, the next hand I have raised is from phone 0732. I've given you permission to speak. You should have received directions to unmute. All right, looks like you're muted. Please confirm your first and last name.
Yes, hi, my name is Elliot Hurwitz, and I'm also a neighbor. Just to, I'm also the, the Chair of the Forest Stewardship Committee of the Cobb Area Council, and I'm also active in the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Preservation of Clear Lake. I mean, to be clear, I'm just speaking for myself as a neighbor, but just to give you an idea, I, I, I am very interested in, and I've been very active in the Cobb Area Council, local planning and strategic development efforts. And with all of that said, I really recognize the importance of cannabis and the coming of cannabis into, for our overall economy and for our community in, in general. In my perspective, what's really important is that it be done right. Frankly, we've, we've already seen, you know, an incredible acceleration after legalization of cannabis grows, knowing that there is, from what I've been able to determine, still an equally large amount of illegal grows that are still happening in our community. And with all of the attendant possibilities of, you know, environmental disregard, et cetera. And so that's why I feel it's very important to have properly permitted, right-scaled, responsible development of cannabis cultivation in our community, knowing that that in turn will help us enforce some of the standards that we've established for legal cultivation. Again, as a couple of people have said, what's also important in our overall strategic development in the community is that things be done at the right scale. I really agree with the previous speaker about the importance of having locally-owned, right-scaled cultivation and Flower Lady Farms fits right in the sweet spot as far as I'm concerned. And I think that, you know, I was very interested to hear Mr. Zaluzki's, he's got a more detailed hydrology of the movement of, of the area. I would very much like to contact him to get some more, to help us understand the cumulative impacts of all of the grows in this area. Because I know that there are at least four, maybe five, you know, permitted operations in the Seagull Valley, and we need to understand how they all, you know, the cumulative impact of them all. But of those all, I think the Flower Lady Farms is, is kind of like a boutique's probably not the right word, but it's a right-scaled, locally-responsible, connected at every level of the community development. So I, I'm speaking in support, energetic support of the Flower Lady Farms permit application. Thank you very much.
All right, the next hand I have raised, raised here is from Lance Williams. Lance, I've given you permission to speak and, and it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Lance Williams. I just briefly wanted to say that I have met the applicants and I support this project. I've been kind of absent as of late, but I just wanted to say I've looked at the project. I know that they are locals. It is a minor use permit, not a major use permit. I'm not affiliated with the project, but they have been neighbors. I've lived in Seagull Canyon and La 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 La. That's all. Thank you.
All right, the next hand I have raised is from Jonathan Green. I have given you, oh, looks like you're muted. Please confirm your first and last name.
This is Jonathan Green. I live right up the road from, from the farm, and I've, I've known the applicants for many years. I actually grew up with Chris Casey. They are genuine, smart, intelligent human beings, wonderful guys and stewards of the land as well. I'm a local arborist, and they hired myself and another local tree company to go through and do the CAL FIRE, Fire Safe Program, Fire Mitigation Work on the land to help protect the farm as well as the neighboring properties from threat of wildland fire. And they were very concerned about conserving native species and doing the minimum optimum on the land for maximum safety. And they're just great individuals, and they definitely have the community's best interests at heart, and I fully support it. Thank you.
All right, the next hand I have up is from David. David, I've given you permission to speak and asked you to unmute. All right, it looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Dave Johnson, and along with most everyone I've heard, I have nothing but good to say in regards to vouching for these young men. And, you know, watching this whole process has been really helpful for me to actually decide what I feel about it because even though these, these guys are wonderful men and I trust their integrity, I also love that wetland, you know? And, and I was wondering how it was going to be impacted, you know, if it was going to be negatively. And, and after watching and listening to what the biologist said, and it was wonderful to kind of meet them over Zoom now, finally, and what, and hearing all the, the, the matter about relocating the well a good distance away, so it won't impact the, the water table, I, I really feel that I can, I can come to rest relative to the safety and the, of the wetlands, you know? This, I just love it at night, you know, during, during, when it is wet out there, it's incredible. The frogs, it's, they're just, they're going crazy there. There's birds, there's all kinds of animals, and they're the neighbors too. So I think there's going to be a lot of eyes on this project, not just, not just the owners. Everyone knows these people around there, and, and I give my thumbs up to the project. And I give my thumbs up to the project.
All right. They've lowered your hand. All right, the next hand I have raised is from Steve. Steve, I gave you permission to speak and asked you to unmute. Steve, are you there? Are you able to unmute?
I guess my hand was left up. I've already spoken.
Okay, great. Then I will lower your hand. Thank you. With that, that concludes all the hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you, Jake. If there's no further community members who wish to speak in the chambers, we will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for any questions or discussion.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate all of the comments that were made today. And there's clearly strong support in the surrounding community for this project. I support the application. I think it's a thoughtful application. I think the applicants are doing this for all the right reasons and the location is appropriate. In terms of the appeal and the points raised, it will adhere to the darkskies.org requirements for downward lighting and all of the rest. As he says, it's very important in terms of wildlife and not disrupting wildlife. But we always impose those dark skies requirements. And I think they're adequate in this case as they have been for other approved grows. And with that, I'd just like to say I'm prepared to move forward. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, please. I wanted to address, Nicole, thank you to all of the public participants. I really appreciate the comments. I think that Steve and Elliot especially spoke to some things that we really need to consider when we're looking at these projects. There are a lot of illegal projects out there. And these gentlemen are setting a really good example. And I think we should do everything we can to support them. But my only concern at this point is the SEQA review that Nicole brought up earlier. I don't know if we can proceed without a full SEQA review or not.
Well, if there really is not, Commissioner, if there really is not a full SEQA review, then we could not proceed. The question here is, is this a phased project? Or is this not a phased project? Was that an incorrect use of the word phase? Because SEQA has a very distinct use for the word phase. And in relation to SEQA, the project that is phased is one that is split for development over time. And it's phased because there are parts of the project, because of their distance to the initial part of the project in time, usually, generally speaking. You can't know all of the elements of the future phases in your initial analysis. You analyze those things you do know in your initial SEQA analysis. You're required to do that. But because there are things you cannot know, then when you get to those future phases, those things are analyzed under SEQA at that time. So for a phased, a true SEQA phased project, those elements, those future phases would have to come back for SEQA analysis at those times. If that is what this project is, if that is how it is structured, then I would say that you cannot say you've completed SEQA analysis because those future phases would by definition not have been analyzed. But if it is, in this case, a misuse of the word phase, if staff has simply broken the project up into elements for analysis and they're presenting them to you in, say, the order in which they will be completed, but the entire project is known at this time, all of the potential impacts could be identified and analyzed and were analyzed at this time, then you could determine that the SEQA analysis was complete. But staff would have to explain their use of the word phase and what was meant here and how the analysis is complete.
Okay, so the way it has been presented is as a phased project. But the way I'm seeing it, we have one big condition on this, and that's the well. And we're not going to be able to look at a hydrology report until that well is completed. So can we table it until that's done? Should we? I'm not quite sure how to proceed. I'm kind of the new person here.
If with all of the evidence presented to you today, you feel that you can make the findings that are in the report, and one of those findings is that SEQA has been met, partly, one of the findings is that, then you may proceed.
But I guess I would have to say I haven't because it hasn't. So I am ready to.
If you're unclear as to, say, for example, use your reference to the new proposed well, if you think that the impacts of that new proposed well have not been analyzed in relation to the entirety of the project, and you feel that that information is not present, and you therefore cannot make the findings, then you can vote no. Or you can make alternatively a recommendation that the project be continued. If you feel that staff and the applicant have presented in its entirety all the analysis that is necessary, including if you think, including an analysis of this other recommended well and the impacts of that well, then you can vote yes. So those are the options you have as a commissioner. And the analysis is yours. So all the evidence you have to analyze has been presented to you. If you have questions, you can ask for clarifications. You can ask for staff or the applicant to provide information if they have it today or provide it later if they need time to get it to you or provide that further analysis or add this new condition, the analysis of this new condition to the report.
Yes, well, I feel that I would like to see the new well and its analysis before I can approve it. I don't know.
Any other comments from the commission?
Yes, I believe the applicant would like to respond to my comment.
Trey Sherrill, consultant for Flower Lady Farms. The Flower Lady Farms is applied for a new well permit. I could understand where SEQA would be, SEQA review would be needed for, if this is, since this proposed well would be used for the commercial operation. But as far as like when a well goes in, these are permits that are obtained from the Lake County Environmental Health Department. And I'd also like to speak to that. There was a condition of approval based on a mitigation measure that we all came to agreement on, Flower Lady Farms came to agreement on. And then also, one thing, everything Mr. Zaleski presented is true to the best of our knowledge, and we're not disputing any of that. But we had communication about this new well situation with Mr. Zaleski. It was our stance, far as farm stance, that the existing well was sufficient. But in response to drought measures and then because we had to provide a drought management plan, that's when we added the new well. But as the condition is currently written, it would require the new well to be drilled and installed prior to cultivation. We've shown good faith that we're moving in that direction as quickly as possible. However, due to the drought, well drillers are, you know, nine months to a year out. And that's a real concern. We're trying, we've made every effort. And I hope Mr. Zaleski would agree that we've made every effort to try to be good neighbors and then to try to minimize impacts to the wetland. But we didn't want to be hamstrung by, you know, not being able to have the new well drilled for another year and not being able to start the business in the spring.
We're, my name is SCOTUS DUNCHY, applicant. We funded this project through our own savings and through family funds. And it's very expensive to get one of these projects off the ground and to stall another year and to wait to put in the well. And just Steve, to speak directly to you, I spoke to you on the phone about contracting your services for the biological survey. I know Malcolm, my father, spoke to you a number of times, and you never brought up any of these concerns? And I'm not faulting you.
Just try to direct it to the commission.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I think that's completely reasonable, and I appreciate everything that Mr. Zaleski stated. But I'm seconding what Trey Sherrill is saying, that it would be crippling to us to not be able to begin our operations for another year. It would be potentially crippling to the point of not being able to continue. Like we're at, you know? Anyways, those are my concerns, and I'm voicing them as clearly as I can. But I'm kind of laying it at the commissioner's feet. We need help to, as a small business, to get off the ground. And this would be, I don't know how to work this exactly, but I think we showed good faith in getting the well permit, paying the well driller for, to reserve their services as soon as they're available. And if we can move forward and get approved on that basis, that would feel very fair to all parties. Okay, I'll stop speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Porter did mention condition A19 is his recommendation, which is the well. So if, I think if he can talk to the, I just don't want to get in trouble here with SEQA. It's been presented as a phased project, so.
And correct me if I'm wrong, staff, did you say that it's within the same footprint, correct? It's just upon completion that's broken down into certain phases?
Correct. There's just different things that would happen in three consecutive years in the same area. So the use of phasing from a SEQA standpoint, as our legal counsel has alluded to, may differ from my understanding of what phased development consists of. So each year would be slightly different in terms of what's on the ground. None of it would be beyond the area that we evaluated for SEQA with the exception of the new well. The new well has to be monitored. They have to provide an annual well report. And I suppose a condition could be added pertaining to quality of water in addition to quantity of water. However, the county doesn't regulate quality of cannabis. That's done at the state level. And so if there's a high degree of boron in the water, the county would have no way of knowing that unless there was a water quality test. And even then, we don't have thresholds for it. So the data would be essentially meaningless. All it would say is, yeah, you got a lot of boron in that water, you know? It's kind of a buyer beware thing for the Duncys. I mean, they're aware of it. Is it going to adversely affect their crop? I have no idea.
Yeah, that's my feeling as well.
Do you have any other comments or questions from the commission?
Hi, Commissioner Chavez here. I believe we have all the information that we need to move this project forward. Believe you guys have shown that you guys are ready, prepared to move on. And I don't believe that the well should be anything to hold this project. So, I mean, obviously, it is going to be done eventually, but I think it's better to get you guys off and running as soon as possible. So I'm ready to make a motion or I'm ready to move forward with the motions.
Thank you.
One second. Public comment has been closed, so I'm not sure. I have a hand raised in chambers, and I'm not sure what I should do.
Has the person spoken already?
Correct, it's the bio.
Okay, are you going to bring any new additional information to your comments that you haven't already?
If you do choose to speak, has to be in front of the mic, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we hear Steve Zaleski out.
Commissioners, if I may. Thank you, Nicole. The commission may reopen public comment if the commission chooses to do so. However, if you do open public comment, you will have to open it for all speakers who wish to speak at this time.
I'm fine with that. I'd like to make a motion to reopen public comment.
There's no need to make a motion. I'll reopen public comment.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, our goal is.
Can you please just state your name one more time?
Sorry, Steve Zaleski.
Thank you.
Our goal clearly is not to appeal the project. And I think we mentioned early on that with some tweaking, we have no problems with it. The SEQA question in particular I wanted to address, and that is, we spoke with the Bureau of Cannabis Control. And with regard to the boron question, they dropped that back in your lap and it has to be dealt with as part of SEQA. So the idea that you're not responsible for it and that the Bureau of Cannabis Control will deal with it later, what they've already said is, no, this is when you need to deal with it. If it is indeed a health and safety concern, clearly it's an issue that needs to be dealt with the SEQA review. And really, that doesn't speak to our issues specifically. It's really up to you. Our only concern would be if there is a problem and then they need to find water elsewhere, that could possibly be an issue. And it is our understanding, because we want to avoid an appeal, that drilling the well is a condition of approval and prior to cannabis. I hear what you're saying. We would certainly agree. The idea is be reasonable, get this thing done. If there's a delay, if they can be, if you can deal with the SEQA issues and boron, we have no problem with them temporarily using this unconfined aquifer as long as we understand. And there's a cutoff date that as soon as possible, give them nine months or whatever it takes, let them use the unconfined aquifer during that brief period of time. But the condition of approval is there's a kill date on that and that drilling the well is a mandatory requirement, not dependent on sensation of a drought emergency, et cetera. So that's what I had to do. And thank you for reopening the public hearing. I really appreciate it.
If I may, Commissioners? Just to clarify, for SEQA and generally speaking, the boron issue or things like it, SEQA requires the study and analysis of a project's impact on the environment, not the environment's impact on the project. So if, for example, in this case, the project, one of the impacts identified was that the project would have the result of releasing that boron when it otherwise was not, or if it were to cause a contamination somewhere else, that would be an impact of the project. Because but for that project, that the boron would not get released, that would be something that SEQA would analyze. But it doesn't necessarily analyze the end result of a project like a food product or cannabis or wine or what have you, if the project area contains a contaminant. That would be a health and safety issue. That would be a food and drug issue. That would be some other regulatory agency. However, as your job as Commissioners, one of the findings you do have to make is it relates to health and safety of the community. And if, when this evidence is presented to you, you analyze it, interpret it in a way that it cannot, that you cannot make the finding because it exists or that particular fact or evidence means you cannot make that finding, then that would be your determination to make. But that's your purpose in analyzing the evidence that's presented to you. So partly correct in that it exists and it could be a potential impact, but that would be part of the SEQA analysis. Partly incorrect that it is not this commission's job to police the contaminants as they result in any cannabis product that may come down the line. Thank you for that, Nicole. I do believe public comment is still open. I do have someone at the podium, Mr. Chair.
Hi, my name is Ben Christo. I'm a co-applicant. There's a couple of things I wanted to comment on just from a common sense point of view. I'm not a scientist, you know, and with this boron issue. But there's a whole string of properties all along the street, and everybody's got a well and everyone's using that water. So I know personally that at least four in a row have wells there and are using that water, and I'm not aware of any issues. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. The other thing is I'm the CFO for our corporation, and I can say that the project can't survive suspending for a year. So I want to be really clear that, you know, I'm hoping that when we vote today, we're clear on what we're voting on. Because that, you know, if we were to suspend until there had to be a drill willing, you know, that would be financially catastrophic for us. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak in chambers before we take it to the Zoom room and close public comment? I do have one more, Mr. Chair. Don't forget to state your first and last name, please.
Malcolm Dunchy. Yeah, this county has the opportunity to have these men steward this land and help Yeah, this county has the opportunity to have these men steward this land and help this community you're not going to find better. You should be doing everything in your power to support, to fund, whatever you can do, it'll make this county better. And if you don't, it's going to be our loss. That's really what I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake, do you have any hands in the Zoom room? Oh, I do have another comment.
I just have a question.
Will you please state your first and last name for me?
Helen Pangelli.
Thank you.
I just have a question. We don't even know if it's necessary for them to drill another well. And wouldn't that mean that you could give them at least a provisional permit until we find out? If it's going to damage the wetlands, it's only for a few months that that can occur. So that's just my question. We don't know if it's really necessary for them to dig another well and to hold up the project for that. Just, it doesn't seem fair. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
If I can comment, Mr. Chair, to the woman's question. It is a condition of approval, Condition 19, that a well shall be drilled. And that's a legal term. It's shall rather than should. Having said that, I don't support the imposition of some cutoff date that the well must be drilled by. I don't think that's fair to the applicants in terms of the nature of the drilling market right now. And I've also been on the commission long enough to remember the other grows in the area that we have already approved. And we have never imposed a boron standard on those other nearby grows. And that doesn't seem to me to be appropriate to single out this one grow when that hasn't been so deeply considered or made a condition of other grows in the area. Thank you. Jake, do we have any hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, we currently have two hands raised in the Zoom room. The first hand I have raised is from Ty. Ty, I've allowed you to speak. It looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Ty Hutcherson.
Thank you.
Hi, I am a neighbor. There's only one property that is in the middle of the grow and my property. I travel down that road, dirt gravel road, every day to and from work and whatever else we do. I moved here five years ago to get out of the hustle and bustle of Mantecce, California that has just blown up since I left. Thank goodness I'm here. The first person I met on that road was Malcolm. He told me what they were going to do. I was a little worried, did a lot of talking with my girlfriend. And that was about a year ago when he was just trying to restore the well. And I'll tell you what, ever since, I've been nothing but impressed. As everybody in the community stated, these three young men are amazing. Their demeanors are all calm, they speak very well, they know what they want to say. When I drive by, I notice every day there's something new, there's something new. And every time I talk to either one of them, they tell me all the hoops that they have to jump through, and that stresses me out. I'm glad they have to do it, not me. And I think they're doing an amazing job. And another thing I wanted to mention is that when all these people are on here talking about community, I wanted a piece of property. I was raised on six acres. I got six acres. I wanted it to be in the middle of nowhere. I'm in the middle of nowhere. I had no idea what was around me. And just by listening to all this, now I realize there's a lot of people in that area that feel the same way as I do. And as far as the wetlands, I had no idea that was there. It wasn't disclosed in my paperwork. Doesn't affect me. I realize what it is more now today I do. So I am definitely in support of this. What everybody said I agree with. It would be a shame to stop them where they are now. And as mentioned, they already put a down payment on it. And if somebody mentioned a minute ago there needs to be a timeframe, they already have a timeframe for the deposit on that well. I just hope it's within, with all the agreements. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
The next hand I have raised is from William Stranger. William, I give you permission to unmute. All right, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Thank you. I'm William Stranger, and thank you again, commissioners. You know, the SEQA Act is a profoundly important act, and it's really meant to, from what my understanding is and my observation, my working here and living in Lake County for over 40 years and speaking with supervisors and many people about it, it's there to protect the environment. I think that the presenters here, the guys presenting this project, when they describe the phases, it's the phases of their work. They've actually done an environmental analysis or they've been conforming to an analysis of the total project, not of one small segment. So I think it would be a mistake for this commission to think that their own analysis of their professionals and themselves and their own fulfillment of the conditions of all aspects of government have been for anything less than the total vision of the project they're putting forward. So I think it would be a kind of a misuse of the spirit of SEQA to break this really very small project to begin with down into smaller chunks in which it was never intended to be presented to you as. So I think that may be just kind of almost like a linguistic difference here. And I hope that that doesn't become something in which the spirit and intent of the SEQA law, which I think they're fully conformed to, would be used to actually defeat a project that the entire community supports, really without qualifications, including new neighbors who haven't known them, people like me who have lived here for 50 years. So I, once again, I'd like to really encourage this planning commission to exercise its judgment and approve this project. I really support it.
Do we have any other hands, Jake?
No, that was the, actually, oh, had another hand come up. It looks like Duncan Gamlin. I do have a phone participant. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand via phone by dialing star nine. Duncan, it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hi, Duncan Gamlin, speaking for the second time. I have been a realtor and a mortgage lending executive for 40 years. And I think we're getting ahead of ourselves on the boron issue, but we don't know what the boron level is going to be in the next well. Needs to be addressed at that time. And I think it's much ado about nothing because there are treatments for taking and removing boron from water that are commercially feasible. So I don't know why this is being raised as an issue, because it's not an issue yet. And if it is an issue, it can be resolved. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I currently have no more hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring this back to the commission for action or any further questions or comments.
I'm prepared to make a motion if there are no further comments.
Okay, I have no further question or comments and I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Okay, I move the planning commission find that the initial study IS-20-112, prepared for the project by Flower Lady Farms LLC on a property located at 12345 Siegler Springs Drive, not Siegler Canyon, Siegler Springs. Lower Lake further described as APN number 012-024-43 on a property located will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated September 23rd to 2021.
I second.
I move that the planning commission find-
Do you have a roll call, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Haas?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I further move that the planning commission find that the minor use permit MUP 20-27 applied for by the Flower Lady Farms LLC on a property located at 12345 Siegler Springs Drive, Lower Lake further described as APN 012-024-43 does meet the requirements of Section 50.4 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the minor use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated September 23rd, 2021.
And as amended here today.
I believe he stated in the conditions that includes Condition A-19, for clarity.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haas?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Just a point of clarification. There was a typo in that motion. It said Siegler Springs. It should be Siegler Canyon Road. So just for the record.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning orders provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seven calendar day following the commission's final determination. Okay, we will move on to untimed staff updates or office news.
Yeah, just to be clear, we don't have to-
Just to be clear.
Yeah. I feel like there was kind of a pause you guys were waiting for, so.
Yeah. The appeal of the-
It's a wash.
Of the early activation permit is now moot because you have taken action on the use permit. So the early activation permit is no longer valid and the appeal is no longer necessary.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying, Nicole. Thank you, guys.
So office news, or?
Yes, Commissioner, I have news.
Okay, thank you.
That is pertinent to all the commissioners.
Have a great day. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Nicole.
As of September 30th of this year, the governor's waiver of the Brown Act requirements will expire, which means that there will no longer be remote attendance permissible unless we meet the Brown Act requirements for remote attendance of commissioners.
Which is the locations and availability.
Which is notification of your location, availability to everybody who would like to attend from that location, accessibility for them to be able to participate in the meeting at that location. However, that being said, the legislature has recently, very, very, very recently, amended the Brown Act to allow for remote attendance should the individual body meeting, hold a meeting to determine that there is an emergency situation, that there is a state of emergency and that remote meetings are necessary. However, there are actions that need to be taken before that can happen. Anita Grant is working on the board's version of that. It should come next week or the week after, something like that. And then I will also bring one to your commission so that you can address that and we can meet the new laws' requirements for remote attendance during the emergency. And just to be clear, this permissive language change in the Brown Act that allows this only applies during emergencies. So there are some findings your commission will have to make in relation to the meeting, excuse me, in relation to the state of emergency and the safety risks of meeting in person. And it requires that that be done every 30 days. So we'll have to incorporate that. If your commission chooses to move forward with those changes, with that section of the Brown Act and choose to elect to meet remotely, you'll have to make those findings every 30 days. So I'll bring something to you. When I do, now it won't be a surprise. But if your commission does not take action before the 30th, then at the 30th, if we haven't taken, if you haven't taken action yet, then you must be here or meet the Brown Act requirements for your location, notification and allowing access and so on.
Excellent.
Any questions?
No. Thank you, Nicole.
Sure. I have one question.
Sure.
So let's say that somebody's not in attendance, they have to post their address or?
So the way the Brown Act works normally, absent an emergency now, is if a commissioner wishes to join remotely, they have to notify that location within a certain number of days, post it, make it available, and then allow people to access that location who want to attend the meeting from that location and provide an ability for those people who do go to that location, a way to listen to and participate in the meeting. So I wouldn't recommend calling in from your house unless we have an exception.
Right. But it kind of doesn't make sense since we do have like an online, like a Zoom room where anybody can join from wherever they want to.
That is true.
To make, it's kind of, I mean, I'll go with it, you know, it's not going to affect because I usually charge up whenever I can.
Yeah. The purpose large, the Brown Act hasn't been updated in forever is my understanding and at least not to incorporate digital, the digital age. The goal of the Brown Act is to provide as much access and participation of the populace as possible to the decision makers and the way they make their decisions. So you're being remote means that that extends the meeting to that location, so people should be allowed to participate at that location. Unless, under this new change to the Brown Act, unless there is a state of emergency declared and your commission finds that there would be a health risk or a safety risk for meeting in one location and a couple of other things is my understanding. And then repeatedly reviews that every 30 days to make sure that the state of emergency continues and that you still do need to have this consideration to meet remotely. But otherwise, absent that decision and those findings, then you'd have to meet the traditional rules for Brown Act, which are notice, give people access, provide them ability to participate at the location that you are remotely. So as of September 30th, if your commission hasn't made the decision, that's the rule you'll have to meet. I mean, if you haven't made those findings, that is the rule you will have to meet. So if we can't-
So you have to be here. If you don't have anything to change, you will be here on that.
Yeah. So if there isn't, if there isn't action by the commission for remote access during a state of emergency and you can't be here, don't call in.
Right. Makes sense.
Awesome. Thank you for the clarification.
I have one question, Nicole. So in terms of noticing, if you're going to notice in your district location, does it have to be 15 days? How far in advance do you have to notice that you're going to be remote?
I'll have to double check the exact number of days, but my vague memory is that it's the same as the notice for any other meeting agenda. So 72 hours in advance for a regular meeting and 24 for an emergency meeting. And we'll still be providing digital access to people. That's not affected by the Brown Act. We can allow the public any number of ways to participate. The issue here is the commissioners and how and where they participate in a meeting. And so, and it's to give the public access to the decision maker, the decision makers process the access they have to evidence. I suppose, yeah. I mean, one could make a sort of mob-like conspiracy theory and say that, you know, you don't know who else is in the room with that commissioner guiding their decisions. But, yeah, but arguably, it's, the Brown Act's sole purpose largely is for public participation and access to its own government. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. There's no other questions for Nicole. We could move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Have a good day, everyone. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.